Okay. Alderman Wilson's here, he's standing right there.
Judy's there.
Standing right outside the door.
What happened with the RV thing?
Marty, do you want to go tell Alderman Fisk where he could?
Um, just a little bit. Alderman Braithwaite is one of his employees.
Oh, they stole.
He was there.
They did.
And he actually, you know, Kelly had some issues too. They didn't get it.
Okay, then I have to, does Grant do all this, or do I have to?
All right, you ready to rock and roll?
Yeah.
Wall, are you ready to rock and roll?
Yeah, I think we're ready. I don't think we have to call anyone.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Six-two.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, April 27th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda, I would like to call the public hearing to order and open the public hearing. I'd like Johanna Niden of Economic Development to give a summary of public notices and conformance to the Illinois statute.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Johanna Niden, Economic Development Manager. One item for the team from the SSA group will get up in a minute and give a presentation, but the notice of public hearing was provided to property owners and taxpayers by mail on March 27th. And the law states that not, that notice must be provided not less than 10 days prior to the date set for the hearing, which is today, April 27th. And that notice must be mailed. That was completed. The second item is to publish public notice in a newspaper of local circulation. And a notice was printed in the Evanston Review on April, in the April 9th edition. And the law states that the notice of public hearing must be printed in newspaper, in a newspaper not less than 15 days prior to the hearing. So we have complied on both counts on that. So I would turn it over now to the committee, the three members of the committee, Jessica Oldani, Malik Turley, and Tim Peterson. And also introduce our consultant, Kimberly Barris, who's been working with the merchants to consider the feasibility of establishing the special service area.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Tim Peterson. I'm president of the Chicago Dempster Merchants Association. I'm here with members of Main Street Merchants Association, as well as some of our committee members. This is Malik Turley, the president of Main Street, and Jessica Oldani, the vice president of Main Street. So I'd like to introduce and talk a bit about the committee that helped to set up the, do the exploration for the SSA. And talk a bit briefly about their responsibilities as business owners and property owners. And if you're here, if you could please stand, any members of the committee. Sean Chensky from Goods of Evanston is both a business owner and a property owner. Christopher Duquette from Christopher Duquette Fine Jewelry is a business owner and property owner. Richard Fisher from the Auto Barn, also on the committee, a business owner and property owner. Jamie Leonardi from Chicago Dempster area is also a business owner. Don Okamoto, also from Chicago Dempster, is a business owner. Jessica Oldani, also a business owner. Myself, I own Squeeze Box Books. Rogie Sussman from Vogue Fabrics is a business owner and property owner. John Saustick is on the committee as a resident representative, and Malik Turley, representative of Hip Circle Studio. So the process to date so far, last year, we went around and collected signatures of more than 60 business owners and landlords to help push along the notion of the SSA. The merchants and the property owners requested the city to explore the SSA for the area, which you graciously issued the RFP for the SSA consultant, of which Place Consulting was hired. Then our steering committee was founded, and it's evenly balanced from members of Main Street Organization and the Chicago Dempster Organization, along with some residents as well. In 2015, the steering committee met five times to explore a lot of the issues that you're going to see later on in the presentation. And we had three meetings with the business community, in which we got feedback, and really informed a lot of the ideas that we have for the SSA. So why would we like an SSA? Certainly, it will help to create a thriving commercial area by connecting these two districts and unifying them via the corridor of Chicago Avenue. We hope to generate more business activity, build an increased awareness through marketing through, of all the businesses there. Certainly help improve streetscape elements, beautify the neighborhood, make it a more pleasant place to be, create more events, improve some of the events that we've done already, build on the events. And certainly less burden on the volunteers. Both the organizations have been volunteer organizations for nigh on 20 years now. And the SSA will help to create a sustainable funding tool that would give us a, initially a part-time manager of that, of these groups.
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Barris from Place Consulting. Just quickly, to provide you some visual context, this is a map of nearby SSAs. So obviously, you have SSA number four here in downtown Evanston. But there are SSAs in other competitive areas. What we've shown here is a map of SSAs in the city of Chicago. There are 53 special service areas in the city of Chicago to date. And you know that there are SSAs in Oak Park and Naperville and kind of other competitive cities for Evanston. In terms of the benefits of an SSA, Tim has touched on those, so I won't read this for you, but suffice it to say, competitive advantage, sustainable source of funding, ability to have reliable programming that isn't dependent on good weather for a festival, for example, or the ability of people to contribute when you pass the hat.
Hi, I am Malik Turley from Hip Circle Studio and the president of Main Street Merchants. This shows you the proposed area for the SSA. It does stretch across both of the merchant districts, the existing merchant districts, and goes west just a little bit along Main Street and just a little bit on Dempster. And we have created a vision statement for the SSA. And that is that the SSA is a vibrant and inviting destination full of diverse neighborhood charm and unique shopping, dining, business, and entertainment just steps from trains and the lakefront. So given all of that, we, at our community meetings, asked for feedback on what would be done with SSA funding, were we to have it. And this is an example of the way that we ask that question of our constituents. And you can see along the side that we had representative participation from business owners, commercial property owners, residents, and then a few other individuals who were interested. And looking at those numbers, the primary pieces that were desired were the advertising and promotions area, as well as public way aesthetics and public way maintenance. So those three areas were the most compelling to the people in the area.
The committee took that, that feedback and input and translated it into near-term priorities and then proposed five-year budget. So in terms of near-term priorities, looking to get money out on the street in terms of capital expenditures, so landscaping and planters and those kinds of things, wayfinding signage, creating a website that would promote and market the neighborhood, and then ultimately doing some business development. So you'll see that represented in this 2016 to 2020 budget. If you'll notice, the, the total expenses are around $200,000 each year. That's what the committee felt was a reasonable amount of money, both in terms of what they needed for desired programs and services, but also what was supportable and bearable by the, the business owners and the property owners. So the, in 2016, you can see the largest, by far the largest expenditure is on public way aesthetics. And we will get into a breakdown of what each of these categories is moving forward. For advertising and promotion and interest in spending money on some existing events, but also potentially adding new events. As the committee members mentioned, the work that's being done right now is being done all by volunteers, and there is quite a bit of stress on them to run these events in addition to running their businesses. Moving forward, public way aesthetics. So this is the, by far the lion's share of the budget for 2016, and lots of capital investment in the district. Public way maintenance, keeping the district free of litter and free of snow, and every other year engaging in public sidewalk cleaning. And then business development, fairly modest effort the first year, and then that ramps up in subsequent years once the district has been improved. There's a real desire on the part of the SSA committee to engage in very proactive targeted business recruitment. Lastly, administration, working with the Economic Development Department, the department has indicated that they would be willing to staff the SSA for the first two years. And so that allows the SSA to keep its administrative costs very, very low. And you can see a breakout here. That number does go up in 2018 with the anticipated hiring of a staff member. Moving forward, in terms of the sample average costs, that budget, that approximate $200,000 budget would necessitate a tax rate, an estimated tax rate of .355%. And so we have a breakout here of what the average cost would be depending on the kind of property. And the, the different breakouts there across the top, the .355, the .40, and .50 were rates that the committee considered in terms of what that upper tax rate cap would be. So this slide is perhaps the most technical slide that we have. It illustrates what the, the possible mismatch might be between a growing budget and somewhat reserved revenue. And so looking at four different scenarios of combinations of low inflation, high inflation, low EAV growth, high EAV growth, when we ran our numbers, we recommended and the committee agreed that a tax rate cap of .45% for the life of the SSA was something that was a conservative number, and yet also gave the SSA some room to grow its budget in case revenue did not grow.
Good evening, Jessica Oldani, I'm a Main Street business owner. So what we want to talk about here is a little bit about the governance and management structure of the SSA. Obviously, City Council is aware of how the ordinance works, but for the members of the public that may not be aware, the city establishes a tax rate cap, boundaries within the SSA, the timeframe and the eligible services that the SSA can perform. And then there's a governing board. The governing board sets the annual tax rate, oversees a work plan, and approves an annual budget. And then there's management, generally a service provider who implements the work plan and manages the budget day-to-day. Oh, there we go. In terms of the governing body, the plan for the governing body is that there would be four seats represented by what is now considered the Main Street Merchants Association, four seats from the Chicago Dempsters Association, and one resident. And then there would be two city seats, essentially a public works director or someone else that is a designee, and a city manager or a designee. These would both be non-voting seats. The members on the governing body could serve no more than two consecutive terms. And in the beginning, we would stagger the terms. Eventually, they would all be two-year terms. They would start out with some two-year and some three-year terms. For managing the SSA work plan, you saw in the budget that the initial capital expenditures are quite significant for the first couple of years. And we don't have a lot of money in the beginning that we are willing to spend on staff, although that eventually becomes significant. So the Economic Development Department has generously agreed to provide us with a staff member for the first couple of years to implement the SSA work plan. After that, we assess our staffing needs at about the 18th month mark and determine permanent staffing needs. The SSA governing body is something that we've all been very thoughtful and careful about. We are all quite committed to creating a democratic and transparent process regarding who participates on the governing body. We are still in the process of establishing that setup. One of our concerns is that we have to be able to manage it efficiently and handle a voting process, but we also want people from all over within the district who are business owners, property owners, and stakeholders to be able to have a chance to serve. So that is what we're looking at right now, and although it's not set, we're, we're all very committed to it.
And lastly, in terms of next steps, this becomes a City Council process from this point on, as Jessica mentioned, or may, may or may not have mentioned, actually, we have one more advisory committee meeting with the folks that have served on the advisory committee and Place Consulting and the city staff, at which, at which time, the committee will take another look and, and iron out that governing and governance and management process. But at this point, it, it is a City Council process. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Has the staff received any written comments? All right. There are speakers who wish to speak on the SSA. And I'm going to call the first three names, Jessica Oldani, Malik Turley, and Kimberly... Yeah, well, here on my list. Christopher Duquette, Tim Peterson. Okay, all right. So there are no speakers. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this? All right. What did you sign? Did you, do you remember the color of? Okay. All right, you, never mind, you're fine. Could you come and speak now? Just give us your name.
My name is Arlene Brumlich. I have an antique store at 1243 Chicago Avenue in Evanston. I've been there 43 years, very proud of that. Love the city of Evanston and love everything about our community. I don't, I'm against this because I don't feel that landlords should, I'm both. I'm a landlord and have a business there. And I don't feel the landlords should have to be supporting this fully. It is really gonna, it's gonna help the business owners more than anything else. And I think maybe there's a way that the business owners can be part of the expense of this. They don't realize that if the landlords are all taking the expense of this, that they're going to pass it on in the rents to the tenants. And I think that's very important that they realize that. And I don't need, think we need $200,000 worth of improvements. The things that are listed are very vague in the, in the letter from the city, saying what they're, they want, they want to improve landscaping, I don't know what that is. They're gonna do the holiday installation of the lighting, well, that's not anywhere near even part of $200,000. And we have a whole warehouse full of Christmas things that weren't used because Dempster Merchants couldn't afford to have them put up. So I know there's a ton of Christmas stuff. The public way aesthetic improvements, I mean, that's way too vague. Wayfinding signage, again, that's too vague. And if they're planning advertising and marketing of the business district, I think that's a great idea, but you can also get a lot of advertising and free advertising for $200,000. And I don't like the fact that they say it's for an indefinite period of time. I don't think that's right either. I think, I think that's way too vague. And I can understand where this worked on Howard Street, which is a blighted area, but I have people come into my shop and say how charming our area is. And I don't want to take away the charming part of our area by improving it to the point where it looks like downtown Evanston. So I think that's an important issue. Part of the thing that is bad in our area is the L station. I mean, that, we have the worst L station in Evanston, and nothing's ever been done about that. And that's not our problem, that's the city's problem in Metra and whoever, CTA or whatever. And I think combining Main Street and Chicago, Dempster-Chicago area is a very bad idea. I think they're very, too far from each other. If you look at places like Naperville that, that did do this, it's a more condensed area, and people can walk from one place to the other. No one's gonna walk from Dempster to Main Street. I mean, few, very few people walk that far. So I, I think, I know why they're doing it, because there's the big properties on Chicago Avenue with stores on the bottom that are all gonna have to pay for this. And I know it's more revenue, but I just think it's a bad idea to combine the two areas. So that's mostly what I have. And also Naperville, if you look online, spent over a million dollars to fix up their area. And if it's gonna cost us a million dollars, a lot of people are gonna go away. Property owners are gonna leave because it's way, way too much money. We don't need it.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Alderman Rainey?
I would just like to clarify that Howard Street is not blighted. And secondly, it is not blighted, and we do not have a SSA on Howard Street. So just to let you know.
Oh, I told you that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It looks as if there's one more speaker. Ira Rose?
I have a business on Dempster Street, and I'm a landlord as well. My only concern is, I'm, I'm all for these improvements. I think it's a great idea. It just seems very vague when we talk about landscaping, when we talk about marketing. I'd like to see more specificity before property taxes, which are already at their all-time high, are added to go higher. I'd like to see what the marketing is, what the landscaping's gonna be, just more specificity. And then if, if it looks like it's something that's viable, then I'm for it. But right now, I just hear a lot of vague generalities. Thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker. Is there anyone after this?
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Rogie. I own Vogue Fabrics on Main Street, and I do want to take a moment to address some of these issues that have been brought up. I understand that there, people are concerned about things being vague, and within our meetings, we have discussed these in detail. This wasn't really the forum to bring those up, and the meetings are open, so people can always come to hear these ideas. So wayfinding, signage, directories, having things implemented within the neighborhood that identify something, like when you drive to downtown Skokie, you see the signs that are clearly marked, and the benches and the things that are just so inviting, something unify, unifying the corridor, making it something that has its own identity, making it marketable. Things for advertising, like with Highland Park, how they did some advertising... Things for advertising, like with Highland Park, how they did some advertising over the winter for the holiday season. Having something that reaches beyond our community to bring people to our area, so that people in other cities, Morton Grove in Chicago, will say, "Hey, look at this part of Evanston. How cool is that? How neat is that? We can spend some time shopping there and exploring it." So, it's something that's really...we have gotten into the specifics, even with the holiday decorating. We've addressed some of those issues, how, right now, we don't have functioning light outlets, so we would need to, you know, have some of these things addressed, and different kinds of decorations. So, these are things that we are discussing. We have come up with a lot of ideas, and I'm sure that somebody in our notes, we can bring them up, if somebody would like to come up to us and ask us more in depth. Is there anything else to be addressed? Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, I think that concludes public comments and discussion, so, seeing no one else who wishes to speak, I'd like to close the meeting and go back to the city council meeting. And the first item on the council meeting is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. And I have a proclamation. It's Evanston Public Service Week, whereas a high-quality and professional public service is essential to Evanston's quality of life, and whereas employees are our most important resource, and whereas city employees strive to provide the highest-quality services within available resources in a courteous, responsive, efficient, and effective manner, and whereas city employees provide high-quality performance striving for the highest standards of personal and professional conduct, integrity, and innovation, and whereas city employees serve citizens in hundreds of ways through the city staff and all departments, and whereas city employees represent the city government in their day-to-day interactions with citizens, and whereas the citizens of Evanston deserve a high-quality, professional, responsive public service today and in the future, and whereas to maintain a high-quality and professional public service for future generations, the city must attract and retain talented people with the required skills and who will use those skills in service to the people of Evanston. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, to hereby proclaim May 3rd through 9th, 2015, as Evanston Public Service Recognition Week, and commend all city employees for delivering quality public service. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public employees in providing responsive and effective government for Evanston. Cindy, we have...Jonathan.
Back to me.
Back to you, city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We're here this evening in addition to recognize a public service week, also to recognize those employees of long-tenured service with the city. Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, is here. I think, Marty, you had some initial comments, and we'll get...well, very good, then. We'll move right on. We're here tonight to recognize those employees of the city with at least 25 years of service celebrating this year. We'd like to start first with the city manager's office, Martha Logan. And Mayor Tisdale, if you could help with that. And Marty, could you serve as proxy for me? Martha is our Community Engagement Manager, long-tenured service in our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department, has been with the city manager's office for the last several years. Martha, congratulations on your 25 years. Next, from our Law Department, at 25 years, Renee Schatzke. Renee, are you here? Thank you. Chief Hettington from the Police Department. We have several employees. One that is not here, Nicholas Demos, 25 years in our Patrol Division. One who is here, Mel Caliar, for 25 years of service. Next, from the Police Department, Dennis Leaks, 25 years. Not with us from the Police Department, also 25 years, Angela Williams from our Neighborhood Enforcement Team. At 25 years from the Fire Department, and not with us is Tom Janetsky, who you all know. Also from Fire, Michael McDonald, at 30 years, and Peter Casey at 30 years. Let's give them both a round of applause for 30 years of service. Next, Director Robinson from the Public Works Department. Not with us this evening, at 30 years of service is Jeffrey Bogues from our Traffic Signal and Streetlight Division, so we wish him congratulations. With us, however, is James Todd from our Parks Forestry Division. 30 years of service. I believe Mr. Kimball has already left for the evening, but John Kimball, also with Parks Forestry, 25 years of service. Garland Jackson, Public Works, Business District Park Maintenance, 25 years of service. Next, from our Parks Recreation and Community Services Department, Assistant Director Dornaker, at 25 years of service, Samuel Johnson, Jr., from our Crown Community Center. Also from Parks and Recreation, not with us this evening, at 25 years of service is Jim Farrar, who runs our beaches. Next, from the Library, neither employees unfortunately are here with us this evening, Laura Hirschfield, Adult Services Librarian, celebrating 35 years with the city of Evanston. Let's give her a round of applause. Also, from the Library Department, Sharon Yor, at 25 years of service. And then, finally, from the Utilities Department, both not with us this evening, John McCoy from our Filtration Division, at 25 years of service, and Mark Steinbach with the Sewer Division, 35 years of service. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we present awards at five-year increments, and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize one of my senior staff who's celebrating five years with the city of Evanston, and that's Grant Farrar. Oh, I'm sorry, did you wanna do a picture? We do need to tell you at some other time about Mr. Farrar's performance. We did a Take Your Sons and Daughters to Work Week event last week, last, what was it, Thursday? And we brought the sons and daughters of our employees through a variety of different municipal functions, and Mr. Farrar prosecuted...no, excuse me, represented the big bad wolf.
And he was happy about it.
He was happy, and before a jury of young children, Mr. Farrar won, and the big bad wolf was found innocent. So, we admire Mr. Farrar's work, and that's just one other example of his fine lawyering, getting off the big bad wolf. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have an award to give out. Congratulations to Alderman Dolores Holmes for 10 years of service with the city of Evanston. And I have one last award. Congratulations to the city manager, Wally Bobkowitz, for five years of service with the city of Evanston. That concludes my public announcements and proclamations. City manager, do you have announcements?
Just a few, Madam Mayor. First of all, earlier this evening, we did celebrate the city receiving the United States Earth Hour Capitol Award, and wanna thank all the staff and members of the community that were involved in that honor, so we're very excited about that. We provided the council, members of the public, some new pins. In recognition of this honor, we have made pins for every single city staff member, so those will be...everyone will be getting one of those to celebrate that. Also, this past weekend, we had a number of events, the Spring Eye Show at the Crown Center, which was, I understand, a great success. But, we also had our, I think, second annual Cleanup Evanston event, where despite threatening weather, had about 200 volunteers around the city cleaning up trash, and we'll have more specifics on the tonnage and all of that at some later point. But, I wanna thank all the staff involved with our Public Works Department Sustainability Office with that. And, Madam Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No knife this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Each speaker has three minutes, and please give us your name. I'm gonna call the first four speakers: Sue Carlson, Junad Riske, Jim Wolinski, and Gene Lindwall. It's gone? All right.
Junad Riske. Once again, no money for Harley Clark, but $2 million in taxpayer money for a grocery store. That is $2 million in free money to a grocery store. Tonight, once again, we have what I would call unprofessional work. That is, the memo presented by staff is convoluted. The problem is, this is acceptable to the council, but it's because this council doesn't have a set of standard that's really of highest standards for information. The $4.9 million of credit is a complete mess, as presented. Anyone reading this has no understanding of what it is. What it amounts to is, the city's borrowing short-term money to give to a food store $2 million, basically, of our money. To me, this is outrageous based on TIF revenue. One has to think the reason we have such unprofessional work here is, basically, we don't really know what's going on. But, part of the reason why we don't know what's going on is, the city really doesn't wanna tell us what's going on, because if we understood what's going on, more people would possibly be outraged by some of this. Council members haven't really learned from their last mistakes. Chicken and waffles, the next theater, the knife store that was here, the coffee shop on Howard. All these things have gone south and failed, basically, and we're stuck paying the bills for these things. It's really the city manager that's setting the standard, unfortunately, not the staff as such. Really, of course, council members are part of this. I remember calling one council member, saying, "I don't understand what's going on at the Water Department, but I think everything's okay." Well, should we understand what's going on? I think that's important. We spend so much time on awards here, this $4.9 million will probably get approved as consent agenda with no discussion and no public understanding. Actually, if you wanna see professional work, I suggest you look at what Ms. Lindwall recently sent you on Harley Clark. That was her tax analysis. That is professional work. Frankly, done in a professional manner, with logical conclusions and what's going on. And unfortunately, we don't have that here, but what I found interesting was Ms. Lindwall said, "Any options on Harley Clark to develop it are basically a bust." But, the last thing she said that I really found interesting, that some of us ought to start investigating, most of these economic development activities are busts, and that's very interesting to me. On Friday, I did send some comments into Harley Clark. Unfortunately, some of my things have been misquoted in the public minutes. I never said, "Secure the building." What I said is, "The building needs to be maintained and operated, so it can't be destroyed by the city." And I will say that again. Shutting down the building would be very dangerous. I believe the building should be used, again, on a limited basis this summer for the Ecology Center and other things. Spending $900,000 on two fog houses at $800 a square foot is a real outrage of taxpayer money. And Harley Clark sits there with vacant classrooms, and city council members wanna close it. Maybe instead of looking into the air, some of you might think about what's going on here. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Tisdale, City Manager Bobkowitz, and happy birthday to you, Mayor Tisdale.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Wolinski, and I'm not here as the Community Development Director for the city emeritus. I am here as the president of the Evanston Kiwanis Club, and to tell you about some exciting activities that are going on. You know, Evanston is blessed to have a number of great service organizations, be it Rotary, Evanston Community Foundation, the Chessmen Club, and of course, Kiwanis. And the Kiwanis International is a global organization that was started 100 years ago in the city of Detroit. And Kiwanis is in 80 countries throughout the world, and with over 300,000 members. In the state of Illinois alone, we have over 7,000 Kiwanians. Because we are celebrating our 100th anniversary as a service club, and our motto is to serve children, because that's what we do, we serve the children of the world, and we serve the children of our local communities, Governor Rauner has proclaimed this Saturday, May 2nd, as Kiwanis Day in Illinois. And because we don't accept, we give, Kiwanians have been supporting the YMCA Camp Independence in Ingleside, Illinois, and over $200,000 has been raised for a playground for children with spina bifida at Camp Independence. And International Kiwanis President John Button will be there to dedicate this wonderful, great playground for children with spina bifida and neurological diseases. The Evanston Kiwanis Club, I'm happy to say, is doing well. We've raised and distributed over $100,000 in the past three years, and of course, we support all youth organizations in this community, be it YOU, Evanston Youth Baseball, Child Care Network, I can go down the list, just like the other organizations do. And we are very proud what we do, and I would just throw out that I think all the service organizations in this community could use some additional membership. For Kiwanis, if you like children, if you love children, consider becoming a part of us. We would love to have you, and I would invite city staff, Alderman, anyone to join one of these great organizations that really help make up the difference with the cut in social service money, both at the federal and state level. It's organizations like these, like Kiwanis and Rotary and whatnot, that are helping to make the difference. So, again, May 2nd, up at Camp Independence in Ingleside, Illinois, a celebration, and if any of you can make it up there, we'd love to have you for the dedication of the spina bifida playground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jean Lindwall?
Yes. Jean Lindwall, you should have all have received a copy of the taxing pact analysis that I submitted to the Harley-Clark Committee last week. As I noted in my email, the sale and redevelopment of the Harley-Clark property will not provide a noticeable property tax savings for Evanston residents. Retention and reuse of the Harley-Clark, of Harley-Clark need not represent a significant burden either. However, that's not what I want to talk about tonight. A few months ago, I prepared a five-year equalized assessed value trend analysis for the 71st and Stony Island Special Service Area in Chicago's South Shore Neighborhood. Between 2009 and 2013, the equalized assessed value of this district decreased by 6.4%. The decrease was largely the result of a 21% decrease in the Cook County multiplier, which is applied to assessed values to calculate equalized assessed value and the tax base of the district. The decrease in the multiplier was offset by a modest amount of new residential development. I was curious to see how Evanston compared, since the city has been actively working to attract new residential towers and mixed-use buildings for the last two decades, in order to expand the tax base. While Evanston did a good job of keeping the property tax levy steady, Evanston's tax base declined by 33.4% between 2009 and 2013, a far greater drop than can be explained by the 21% reduction in the multiplier. Will Metz has not seen the type of residential development that Evanston has actively sought. Between 2009 and 2013, Will Metz's tax base declined by 33.0%, slightly less than Evanston's decline. My questions for you are these. Why haven't all of the new Evanston buildings resulted in an increased tax base, or at least mitigated the decline in the multiplier? How are Evanston residents benefiting from the city council's economic development approach that focuses so heavily on new real estate development? Is it possible that the city, the city's economic development policies are dampening market values for existing properties? Would focusing more attention on providing quality public amenities do more to grow Evanston's tax base? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next is Priscilla Giles, Carl Bova, Barbara James, and John Mintier.
Priscilla Giles. I don't purport to know the statistics, but I wonder what happened to the Evanston that attracted new residents, and that made multi-generational families decide to stay here. What seems to have happened is, the city is for sale. Developers paid their way, pay their way out of providing housing for people who have been in Evanston for generations. Young people who are just starting out, and for seniors now on fixed incomes. Somehow, every green space is being sold for unaffordable housing for those aforementioned residents. How long before Evanston, formerly known as the City of Parks, is past history, and now City of the Rich, and diversified only by those living in luxury apartments or luxury housing, and subsidized senior apartments? Not to forget that there is money to pave a walking path over a mile long, but not enough money to replace the circle in front of Fleetwood Jordane that serves not only seniors, but youth who may temporarily be on crutches, and the permanently physically challenged. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Carl Bova. My comments are directed at 1620 Central Street. TOD does not equal ridership. CTA ridership at Central Street is down 34 riders per weekday in the past year. CTA plus metro is down 14 riders per day between 2006 and 2014. This is with 80 extra units at nearby TOD Central Station. Three little noticed and poorly described meetings were held last week regarding the city, the parking problems on Central Street. The city has barely begun to understand the breadth of the problem. Residents are being denied parking, employees can't find it, and customers can't find it. The problem is real, it is now, and it should not be added to, with the inadequate parking provided onsite at 1620. By the way, Central Station's garage is full, and new residents' cars are spilling out into the neighborhood. When the art center moves in, in direct competition with the 10 Mile House Restaurants Peak Hours, what little parking is available will be exhausted. And of course, there is no overnight parking at Ryan Field. There is no reason for this council not to require the full complement of 72 spaces at 1620, going underground, like many other developments have. If not, then lop off the fourth floor. Thank you.
Good evening, Barbara James. I am here again to ask the city council's help in getting information to the Harley-Clark Committee, to enable the committee to make the best informed recommendations to you as possible. At the Harley-Clark Committee meeting, following my previous request to counsel, city staff did provide an estimate of the demolition of the building. To me, the 170,000 sounds low, and the specifics of what was included were not clarified. It is not clear, and probably did not include, fill in of the foundation and surface grading to condition that the new open space could be used for public purposes. That would be useful information. My two other requests were not fulfilled, and again, I ask that you direct the city manager to provide the committee with the following information. Go back to IDNR and inquire as to their, the current status of their interest in using the building for the coastal management program. Alderman Grover and others met with IDNR Director Rosenthal during Evanston Day in Springfield. The Director Rosenthal said he did not know anything about the proposal, the proposed idea to bring the coastal management program to Evanston. He said he would look into the matter. I urge either Alderman Grover or the city manager to follow up with Director Rosenthal. The committee continues to talk as though it is very possible that IDNR will, is still interested in the building. But we need to know that information for sure. Secondly, I ask again, the council, direct the city manager to provide the committee with what it costs to operate the building. That's information that the committee needs in order to make an informed decision. And I have an additional request. The city has permitted a contractor access to the building to determine the cost of rehabilitation for some private entity. Several contractors have stated their belief that the rehab costs being thrown around are extremely exaggerated. They have asked for access to the building, and that has been denied. Please direct city staff to arrange for these local contractors to have access to the building, to enable them to make better informed estimates of the cost of rehabbing the building. It is only fair. It is also vital that the committee have adequate, reliable, accurate information in order to make recommendations to you. The credibility with the public of the committee and the entire process will rest on the perceived fairness, transparency, and completeness of the information provided. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Mintier. I live at 1111 Foster, just down the street and around the corner. And I'm happy to have my alderman here. I wanted to speak against the RV parking change, which would prohibit parking of RVs on the street. I do it for two reasons. One, I have a trailer. I don't park it in Evanston very often, but I can foresee the time when I might park it for a short period of time. Or it might be longer than what the change to the ordinance would allow. But I really come to speak about my neighbor, who is Chuck Steinbuck. He lives across the street from me. He lives in a house that his grandfather built, so I think probably the family ownership of that house, since the day it was built, is the oldest in Evanston. His father worked for the Evanston Fire Department, and Chuck was a city inspector for 20 years, since we're giving out awards for a longtime service. He's a veteran who has that disease that I don't remember the initials for, but he has to have oxygen at times, he has difficulty breathing. And he has, not a motorhome, a van conversion unit with the top on top of it. He parks it in front of his house. Now, you've driven down Foster, it's not a showplace, but there's nothing wrong with the street. All the new Mercedes and BMWs belong to the students, but Chuck has been able to keep this van running, and he uses it occasionally, when he can afford the gas, but he won't be able to park it in front of his house, which just seems wrong to me. It's not an eyesore, it's not a problem for anyone. When I looked online at this proposal, the most frequent question was, "What's the problem?" And one person wrote and said, "Well, how would you like to have one of those parked in front of your house?" Well, if I had that, I'd talk to the owner, and it seems to me, there are ways not to change the law. And I don't really see that many RVs parked in Evanston, maybe I just don't get around enough. I feel like, as I get older, and I'm a senior too, that I'm being pushed more and more to the libertarian point of view, because if we need a law for regulating RV parking, when you don't see any really in Evanston, I would say, maybe we've got too much government. But please vote against this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And the last speaker is Mary Rosinsky.
Hi, it's Mary Rosinsky, at Chancellor. I just have a couple comments, more than any specific issue. One of the comments is, I'm a little concerned about some of the maybe lax process that we're experiencing, because we're doing so many different things. Last week, there was the parking committee, the agenda, and the packet was not posted prior to the meeting, I understand, by the time I got there. And that brought up, you know, a little bit of a bad feeling, because I think you know that Central Street has very difficult parking, and that whole building on, where the theater was, hundreds of citizens opposed the allowances that were given on their parking, when it was a 48-unit, and they were given allowances for parking. And then it went to a change, and became a, not a condo, but a 72-unit rental building, without any input from the community, but there was no more parking added to it. And now, there is no place to park over there. And hopefully, we will have more development happen, businesses want to come, restaurants are good, and there is literally no place to park. And I'm not saying that just because I live a block away from it, but I feel bad for the businesses, because people can't come and support our tax base if they can't find a place to support our businesses and park their car. And then, when they do park their car, if they're lucky to get a chance, as are they, if they stay for more than two hours, they're going to end up with a ticket. So, I would just really ask you to consider the economic cycle of giving too many allowances. I think the minimum that the building where the theater was should have had was employee parking. We all knew that there was going to be a restaurant on the corner, because we've lived in the neighborhood for 20 years, we knew what was going to probably happen there. Your residents in their neighborhoods, they know their neighborhood. And I was cleaning out my house the other day, and it's so funny, I felt this from when we were protesting the parking allowances given there. And this was from a memo from the City of Evanston, and it says, "We understand the proposed 1,722 Central Building redevelopment project will provide for all its own required parking on this site, with the exception of seven spaces for retail customers." It doesn't. There are more than seven spaces currently available for Latin 64, I don't think there's many more left there. And there appears to be sufficient on-street parking for 1,500 and 1,600 Central Street. That's when it was a 48-building, not a 72-unit. But my point is, is that we need to have long-term vision. When we expect that something is going to be successful, we should plan for success, not plan for problems. That being said, I also, you know, talk about the Harley-Clark, and I'm concerned that the local contractors have not been called in. I think that we have an Evanston rebuilding warehouse that does a jobs training program for our people. And I think, again, in the economic cycle, if we support our people, let's get an estimate from them, and how much, because that would put people to work. And then, it would keep things out of the, out of the garbage cycle, and then people would go to the recycling place and buy those things and add to our tax base.
Mary, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, please listen to the people, we're not just the usual suspects. We are here because we care. And I don't think that's saying that people who come all the time, that there's a lot of people who aren't here that care more or are more important. I think everyone's important. And we're making sacrifices, being here, not being with our families, and then staying up till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, doing our work, just so we can speak for our neighbors who can't make it here too. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
A couple of comments. Both the Sixth and Seventh Ward aldermen are not here, and certainly, Central Street parking has been an issue for them. Both Alderman Grover and Alderman, attend them, have had several neighborhood meetings on the subject of parking. And one of the reasons that the issue came before the Transportation Parking Committee is, exactly as you heard this evening, the feeling of both aldermen's, is that this is a larger community issue, and when the city has a larger community issue, it takes it to one of its 42 boards or commissions. And so, that was taken before Transportation Parking. There were no issues with posting of the agenda. The agenda was posted according to state law, and it was on our website, along with all the other boards and commissions. Regarding the Harley-Clark mansion, as the council is aware, Mayor Tisdale has appointed a committee. It has been the most transparent process in the six years that I have been your city manager. We are posting every single email that is received by the committee, we are sending newsletters out to remind people about the meetings. Extensive minutes are being taken, there have been opportunities for people to see the building. Every piece of information that has been requested by the committee has been provided, period. And so, it's been a difficult process, there's a lot of very interested folks in that, but your staff is working very diligently to provide the committee every piece of information that they request.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. City Manager, the only thing, and I agree with everything that you're saying, but at the Transportation Parking Committee, there was a discussion item as, regarding the parking on Central Street, but the presentation wasn't, wasn't part of the packet. And I think that would have been helpful in terms of, of getting the word out to the community of exactly what we would be talking about. So, in future, I think that would be really helpful. It certainly would have been helpful for me, because I don't live on Central Street, and it's not on my board, so.
And Alderman Fisk, members of the council, as you know, we try to be as diligent as we can. I know of no other community in America that posts PowerPoint presentations prior to meetings. Many, many do after meetings, but we hold ourselves to a higher standard in doing that. It's not always possible. And again, there were, have been extensive discussions in both the Sixth and Seventh Ward, so I think certainly, we will continue to endeavor to make those, those presentations available ahead of time, but that's not always the case. But they're always posted afterwards, and...
Well, just something about what was going to be discussed would have been helpful, maybe not the whole PowerPoint presentation, but just some information would have been useful.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Special Order of Business Fiscal Year 2015 Financial Update.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, in your packet, in the interest of time, would bring your attention to the memorandum from Mr. Lyons, dealing with some current budget issues. Just a second, let me pull this up properly. We'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have. Generally, we are doing, I think, fairly well, a first, first quarter. We generally hesitate to come to you first quarter, only because the numbers are not as, as significant as we would hope they would to be. But you'll see in your packet where we are at, we're doing fine, I think, for the first quarter, and certainly, Mr. Lyons and I are here to answer any questions. here to answer any questions that you have. Also included in the Packet is the first quarter investment report. We really had hoped specifically to speak to the remainder of the fiscal year and where we see we are at with the state of Illinois. The memorandum on page 29 of your Packet really restates a number of things I know that the city council is already aware of, that for the current state fiscal year, which ends on June 30, the governor and the General Assembly have made adjustments. Those adjustments largely do not impact cities, villages, and towns in Illinois. However, as the state is focusing now on budget preparation for fiscal year 2016, the state fiscal year, which will begin July 1, Mr. Lyons and I are both very concerned that we need to take steps today, so that if the state does make adjustments to their budget, which will be the final months of our current year budget, that we need to be in a place to do that. So this evening, I am making the following recommendations that we would move forward with right now in order to prepare ourselves for any adjustments that might be necessary. First, I'm asking Mr. Lyons and members of his team to meet with our bargaining units regarding two possible furlough days that would be taken before the end of this fiscal year. One would be on the Friday before Labor Day, and the other would be on New Year's Eve. We believe we would save approximately $215,000 with each of those furlough days. A part of that is cash. As we've been through this before, unfortunately, we have learned that for the Safety Departments, Police and Fire, the approximate adjustment there is to remove a day of leave, so that is not a direct cash savings. So that direct cash savings would be $115,000. We feel it is prudent now to begin those discussions, so if indeed in July or August, when the state will ultimately adopt a fiscal 2016 budget, there is an impact, that will have an impact on our current fiscal year, which ends December 31, that we would have some flexibility. So recommending that we move forward and have those discussions. If the state does not make adjustments that are significant, certainly it would not be the intention to move forward with those furlough days, but if those are made, that we would have the nimbleness to make that adjustment as early as the first Friday in September. Second, I've asked the city's budget team to engage with all departments in a much more vigorous budgeting, budget monitoring process than we normally would this early in the year. As the council is aware, we've recently, in the last year, implemented a new online financial system, and the tools that we have to track our budget are much more fine than we've had in previous years, but still believe that if we can stay very much on top of both revenues and expenditures on a departmental basis, that that will be helpful to us. And I'm asking Mr. Lyons and Mrs. King to move forward with that. Then, next is that the department approval levels. Right now, department heads have the ability to approve expenses up to $5,000. I'm asking, actually directing the staff to make that adjustment, and so those will now be requiring the CFO, Mr. Lyons', approval versus approval at the department level. We believe that these steps make sense for us. It's the last piece of this is that I would like to reach out. I'm planning to reach out to members of our staff. We'll have a couple of staff meetings over the next six or eight weeks to talk with the city staff members, to see if they can help identify other cost-saving measures. We have done that in previous years and have had some success with that, so I think that that would be a very prudent thing to do. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the report that you have before you for the first quarter, for those projections, for those spendings, within our control, I feel very comfortable with. As we look toward the balance of 2015, I am concerned that it'll be very difficult for the state of Illinois to solve its budget problems without having some impact. It may be the local government distributed fund, it may be something else, but I think in order to make sure that this has the least impact on the community and the least impact on our employees, that these steps are prudent at this time. So would be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Lyons and Mrs. King had a very lovely presentation, and I apologize for kind of skipping right through most of that, but again, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Rainey?
I was concerned, although I do understand that the insurance fund represents a reserve for cases that have not been resolved. I'm wondering, have any of those cases been resolved since the report was worked on?
Alderman Rainey, members of council, since the first quarter, we haven't had any major change. If you may recall, from last year, the number went from 7.9 million down to 3.9 million as a negative. You know, it shows as a negative on our fund balances, so we have that much reserves beyond the cash in bank that we have. We made significant strides towards the new fund balance policy that the council adopted, wherein we are looking to have a percentage of cash as an offset to what's in the bank. So we are, we got close to it before our most recent settlement, where we were in excess of $1 million in cash and had the $4 million in claims payable. So we've really improved, but we're still in the red. We've got a little bit further to go. So I hope that answers the question.
I don't think it was the answer she wanted, but...
Well, I mean, I was hoping that maybe there had been some changes.
No, no major settlements that took the reserve down.
What would have happened in the case of Rauner's retraction of our award for, what was it, bike lanes or something? Oh, no, fiber optic cable.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question.
I said, what would have happened in the case of Rauner's request that we return the money, if we had actually spent that money?
I believe, I defer to Attorney Farrar, but...
We have to dig and get it.
I believe that we lived up to the contract, and we would have just been able to show the project is being done.
And we're not in a position to show that we've done work on that? And have we actually encumbered that money?
In answer to the second part, no. In answer to the first part, we were all the way into design, and as the city manager provided a short summary just yesterday, or just recently, we had designed for laying the fiber optic cable to Main and Chicago. We had done all the work possible to meet with all of the property owners of the four buildings, and we were at the stage of putting everything in. Our goal was to have a bulk situation where the whole building would get lit up, and none of the property owners, we only had three out of four to go to, because Main and Chicago is being built, but none of the associations wanted to do a bulk, you could have access to everybody. They wanted it to be one-off, just go in and try and get people in. But we had a contract all set up with both ISP, so an internet service provider. We were all ready to go to finish that off this year.
So the most, I think, to elaborate on the answer, a lot of staff work, a lot of Jose Calderon...
We can't deduct the cost of that?
At this point, we do not believe we can.
Right. I mean, that's just... And what about, what about the citizen comment requests about an update on Harley-Clark? I mean, I thought the answer was pretty conclusive, that they're not even thinking about it, and the guy didn't even know about it. Have we heard anything back from them on that?
No.
Yeah, no, yeah. That's a no?
No. So unless, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think, again, a real bright spot, and we heard from one of the speakers this evening about economic development, economic activity. If the city council has not, had not made the investments that you've had over the last several years, I don't think we would certainly be in the good position that we're at. The revitalization that we've seen, really in every corner of the city, from Howard Street to Chicago Avenue to the West Side to Central Street, is all activity that the city council has taken a fine lead on. And so I think that perhaps it's not advised to think that that investment is not paying dividends now, and certainly the fiscal position we are in, I think, will serve us well. And as the state makes changes, I think we're well positioned to deal with them as responsibly as we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Can we get an update on what we're worried about and what we actually know, and, you know, that kind of a analysis?
I can tell you, I'm worried about a lot of potential state disasters, but what I actually know is not much.
Mayor Tisdale and I will be in Springfield on Wednesday. The Illinois Municipal League's Annual Legislative Day is Wednesday. They'll, we'll be there bright and early. We'll hear from the variety of speakers that they'll have. We'll also be meeting with our members of the legislature, so...
So after that, can you...
I probably will be in exactly the same position I'm in now.
Absolutely, Alderman Rainey. If there's anything new to report after our visit this week, we'll certainly let you all know.
All right. That concludes your update. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Happy birthday, ma'am.
Thank you.
The consent agenda, approval of the minute to the council meeting, April 13. Administration Public Works meant this evening, and ask your approval for the payroll, $3,024,482.75. City bills, $1,658,252.72. We also ask your approval of the renewal of sole-source software license and service agreement with SunGuard Public Sector for Computer-Aided Dispatch System, known as CADS, for the police department, in the amount of $75,119.30. Your approval is requested for a contract extension for one year with Healy Asphalt for Hot Mix Asphalt, for an estimated cost of $39,200. We ask your approval to purchase pavement marking services through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, in the amount of $50,000, with Superior Road Striping. Approval is also requested to authorize purchase of two replacement Ford pickup trucks, in the amount of $61,962 from Curry Motors. This is also through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. Approval of a contract with Schroeder &amp; Schroder for the 2015 50/50 Sidewalk Replacement Program is requested, in the amount of $356,610. We request your approval for Duncan Solutions 2015 contract, and also passport parking expenses, to cover the fees associated with parking meter and pay-by-cell operations, in the amount of $190,400. We ask your approval of Sidewalk Cafe for Freshy at 1596 Sherman. Sidewalk Cafe approval for Petessary Coral Lee, 600 Davis Street. Sidewalk Cafe for Boltwood, 804 Davis Street. Approval of a Sidewalk Cafe for Tapas Barcelona, 1615 Chicago Avenue. Off the consent agenda is Item A5. It'll be addressed by the committee chair. A6 is approval for a Parklet, sponsored and managed by Hune, for two parking spaces located at 810 Dempster Street, for a period of time starting in mid-April through the first week in November for four years. $800 annually from the Economic Development Fund to the Parking Fund will be transferred to offset revenue. Ordinance 58015 for introduction adds recreational vehicle parking and amending the City Code, Section 1062, authority to remove vehicles. This is for introduction only. We ask approval for introduction of 50015, authorizing the manager to sell four vehicles owned by the city through public auction at Northwest Municipal Vehicle Auctions. Ordinance 52015, Dryden Place addition to city street system. We request your approval for introduction, and also, I believe, suspension of the rules, and this will be addressed further for action by the committee chair. Ordinance 40015 is for action, authorizes the manager to execute a lease agreement for a city-owned property at 1804 Maple Avenue with Pharmicon LLC. Ordinance 44015 is for action, and decreases the number of Class C liquor licenses for Agamon at Clark Street, at Clark's, Inc., doing business as Clark, at 720 Clark. Reduces the number from 22 to 21. For action is Ordinance 45015, decreasing the number of Class D licenses for Mount Prospect Ventures, doing business as Giordano's, 1527 Chicago Avenue. Ordinance 41015 is for action, and amends the city code by creating the new Class F1 liquor license. Ordinance 48015, increasing the number of Class F1 licenses, is also for action for Whole Foods Market Group, Inc., doing business as Whole Foods, 2748 Green Bay Road. For action also is Ordinance 46015, amending 346 (P1), to allow for the sale of beer in 22-ounce containers for off-site consumption. Ordinance 47015, amending the city code by creating the new Class P3 liquor license for craft wineries. For action also is Ordinance 49015, removes the Evanston Arts Center and adds Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center as authorized city-owned buildings for special one-day liquor licenses. That's for action. Also for action is Ordinance 38015, amending the city code, sidewalk cafes, allowing the sale of wine at wine shops in Otaka Sidewalk Cafes. It's for action. Under Planning and Development, P1 is off the consent agenda, will be addressed by the city chair, by the committee chair, and P2 is off the consent agenda, will be addressed by the chair. P3 is Ordinance 43015...
Alderman Rainey, could you take that off?
That is off the consent agenda, and Alderman Holmes will deal with that, too. For appointments, Environment Board, Kristin Lemms, Noreen Edwards; Mental Health Board, Cicely Fleming; Transportation Committee and Parking Committee, Alejandro Anan; for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission, Sharon Bowie and Stephanie Murray. That is it, and I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Six to zero.
Six to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Thank you, Alderman Rainey, and could you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes, ma'am. Under A5 is authorization to access, access a line of credit, $4.9 million. This is in agreement with the First Bank and Trust, and it is for use in the Dempster Dodge and Main Chicago Tiff. I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
And I'd ask to have it taken off. I'm just going to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any...
Because I occasionally have done some work for the bank in the past.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for any further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? Of course, zero. Five to zero.
All right. The motion passes, five to nothing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move approval. Introduction and suspension was already moved. For Ordinance 52015, Dryden Place addition to city street system.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. The rules have been suspended, so this would be for action on Ordinance 52015. Is there any discussion? City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Six to nothing, the motion passes.
Alderman Rainey, does that...
The only other thing, we had a discussion item on free trade, and we're going to get more information on the state of Illinois.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes, could you help us with Planning and Development?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. For P1, Ordinance 21-0-15...
For P1, Ordinance 21-0-15, zoning ordinance for text amendment regulating personal services establishment, for unanimous vote of three, I have to remember, three, is it three of us on there? Four, four, four to none, that we decided not to move this on to council.
All right. Is there any discussion? No? All right, thank you.
All right, and on P2, sorry, Ordinance 60-0-15, amending the inclusionary housing ordinance. After discussion, well, listening to comments from the residents and some discussion among council, we did put this on hold, and it will be brought back to us with many questions that council members gave to Director Munzer. Will be brought back to our first meeting in June.
Thank you.
And then, Ordinance 43-0-15, the planned development, 1620 Central Street. I would move approval.
Second. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question. I think Mr. Munzer is probably gone for the evening, but I'm just curious as to when a development does not meet the parking requirements that we have, is there, was there any discussion on Central Street of doing some underground parking that would mitigate the reduction in spaces?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, my understanding is perhaps that was discussed very early in the process, but normally developers indicate that the excessive cost associated with that makes it prohibitive.
Okay. But we don't know for sure whether that was, you're just assuming.
I was not present in any of those specific discussions, but that is a standard discussion that occurs with developers.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I am generally interested in the impact, not only on small businesses, but also on neighborhood parking. I mean, I tried to address this a little bit on the 1571 Maple, which is a much, much different parking problem than exists here. I mean, at least here, we're getting close to the number of parking spaces that are required, but, so I am concerned about the impact on neighbors and on neighborhood and about just sprawl of cars, but also, as a small business owner, outside of the downtown, things are much different. People expect to park very close to the businesses that they're visiting. They do a pretty good job of this west of Green Bay Road on Central, because there's a parking lot there, and generally, if you circle the block a few times, you can find a space. But people really do have different expectations when you go outside the downtown. Downtown, people are willing to walk a little bit farther. It's not absolutely necessary to have a space right in front of you, but as you leave and get into the neighborhood centers, the expectations do change a lot. So I think it's just something, as the discussion of parking on Central Street moves forward, I think we really need to pay some attention to this, and hopefully the Parking Committee will take that up. Alderman Nguyen? Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
We need to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, I'm sorry.
My only concern with it was that the affordable units were one-bedroom, and I would like, in the future, to have families be welcome as well. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 43015, planned development, 1620 Central?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Breitway?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Six to nothing, the motion passes.
And now that concludes my report.
That concludes your report. Thank you very much, and we are at call of the wards, starting with Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Happy birthday, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Breitway?
Happy birthday, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Alderman Nguyen?
Happy birthday.
Thank you again.
Happy birthday.
Well, thank you. All right, and Alderman Wilson, we don't need a motion from you, except to adjourn any.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's carrot cake for the mayor, only once. Alderman Holmes, Alderman Rainey, there's carrot cake, if you like, for the mayor.